Welcome to the February eighth, two thousand and twenty-two Town Council meeting. Roll call.
Andy Schaefer.
Here.
Trey Robey.
Here.
Dawn Davidson. Cody Nielsen.
Here.
Tim Weber.
Here.
Alyssa Granger.
Here.
Keely Oakes.
So just so it's noted that Dawn is called in sick and Keely is out of town. Tim, would you mind giving the indication?
Oh, sure. Let's bow. Heavenly Father, gracious Lord, we thank you for this day and thank you for giving your son, Jesus, to die on the cross and raising him three days later. And Lord, I lift up this meeting to you tonight and all that are present, Lord, that you just put your hand on us. And Lord, I lift up council and, and town administration, the town employees, police department, our medical services, fire services, and ask, Lord, that you just put a hedge of protection around us and just guide us, Lord. Give us wisdom and discernment, but most of all that we glorify you in all that we, we do. And Father, I lift up our area, our businesses and the area companies and, Lord, just stabilize them and, Lord, just guide them and make them prosperous, make us prosperous, in your son's precious name. Amen.
Lisa, will you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item five A, discussion and action to approve the minutes of the January twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two Town Council meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of January twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two.
All second.
The motion's been made by Trey, seconded by Alyssa. All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstained.
Opposed and Tim abstained. Motion carries. Petitions and public input. Changes to the agenda. Looks like we've added.
Well, I added Jeannie. So this year, the supervisors would, we technically would like to have them come and report to you on the second meeting since we have their reports in the first one, just because sometimes they feel like they're coming up too fast and a lot of them have to come for other reasons and then they end up, they're just here every meeting. So, but this time, we wanted Jeannie to come just to talk about the east entrance, especially since we have that on the agenda tonight, just so we can kind of make sure everybody remembers everything that we've done to lead up to the application for this grant. And she'll probably give you, it's not the actual pictures of what we will hope to approve, but it'll give you some sense of what it'll look like. So we're gonna have her talk tonight and then we just won't have a supervisor the next time. And then also, I wanted to change item fifteen H to a resolution as opposed to just an action item to show our support for the Book Cliff Highway project. And that is underneath your agenda.
Okay, is there any other changes?
No.
Public hearing is noncommittee and board meetings.
Yeah, RDA, RDC, and we just talked about the projects coming up and, is that the one that we approved, Jay's? Or that was the previous one? Yeah, Andy's resignation that we had, obviously, two or one addition to the RDA, which you guys had already approved. But it was basically mostly a business meeting. We didn't have any action items to speak of other than just the previous minutes and the financial. And also accept our revised budget.
Okay, any other meetings? Anybody want to?
Hang on a second. I think this is Sam. Hi, this is Lisa. I'm just gonna put you on speaker and I'll mute you until we get to that point, but if you have anything, just hold her out and I'll unmute you, okay? Sorry about that.
Item ten, commissioners' reports. I don't, haven't heard from them. Item eleven, council reports. Okay, item twelve, supervisors' reports. Jeannie, welcome. Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. So I'm gonna talk a little bit about the east end project that we've been working on for a very long time. So, next slide, Lisa. So I, I just wanna start out by saying, this is some pictures of the east end. And, you know, a lot of people say, well, why change? So, next slide. As you can see while she's doing that, the, the east end entrance is starting to fail. The timbers, the railroad ties, whatever you wanna call them, are starting to fail. And the, the rocks are sliding all over the place. We've had to, several years, have people come in and move the, the rocks back up. So there's been quite a few problems with that. So the question arises, why change? Well, first of all, it's needed, but next slide. It's also for economic development. So if you look, any economic class that you take, one of the first things they'll tell you about economic development is that your civic infrastructure is very vital to a community. And I just put a quick definition up here, excuse me, a simple definition. Civic infrastructure is a city's public spaces and civic assets, which would be a collection of physical sites and buildings. So the east entrance would be part of our civic infrastructure along with all of our parks. There's walking paths on one side of that OHV trail on the other. So it's, it's open to the public. That would be part of our civic infrastructure. And when you see that starting to fail, it's more of a replacing it because it's needed than just for the beauty of the earth. It's, it's needed. So, next slide. So, to kind of give you a history, this was kind of fun. I did some research on the history of the east entrance. It was built approximately thirty-five years ago. And Jeff LaBlu was actually part of building this project. And he says they went to the river, they loaded up rocks by hand. He couldn't remember where the timbers came from and they brought them to the east entrance and they built that. And that was when Don Peach actually was mayor, I believe he said, of the town when, when this was occurring. So it's about thirty-five years old and for timbers and things like that, that's a pretty good life. So we, we've got a, a lot of beauty and joy out of this east entrance for a long time. So, next slide. So in two thousand and nineteen, the town of Rangeley applied for and received a five thousand dollar grant from DOLA who partnered with the Colorado Center for Community Development at the University of Denver. So they refer to that as a UTA. And the goal of, of UTAs is to help with Main Street beautification. So what they did was we held stakeholders' meetings. That was before I worked for the town. And they sent university students here to learn about our history, to actually walk the town. And then they created a report of how we could beautify Rangeley. And it was all based on community input, stakeholder input, and how people felt about their town, what kind of appearance they wanted to have. So that was in two thousand and nineteen. Next slide, Lisa. So we actually have the attendance sheets from that meeting and actually, three of you all were in attendance. I think Tim and Andy and Alyssa were all in attendance at this UTA meeting when the University of Denver came. So we had several people there that had input on what they would create to be their UTA report. So, next slide. So they created some themed proposals and I, and I put, I drew the sheet from the UTA report with the different proposals that they come up with. And I liked what they said. They said a gateway sets the tone for residents and visitors as they enter town. So they created what they believed to be a gateway project. Well, in March of two thousand and twenty, the UTA was presented to a few people in town, but as you'll recall, COVID had hit at that point, so it was done by Zoom and there was only a few of us on that call. But they went through what they had worked through, what their thoughts were and what the, the input that they had gained from the community. Mostly what they presented was renderings. It was just ideas. There was no engineering, there was no architectural design. There was nothing that we would need even for CDOT to, to create this project from beginning to end. It was just a group of ideas. And they had some good ideas. They pulled colors and, and things from the west end, like the car museum, stone from the town building. So they're pulling that idea and they recommended that that be carried throughout the town on any new infrastructure or beautification projects that took place within the town. So they did create some good ideas, but honestly, when we were presented those, we were kind of like, hmm, we're not buying all of these. So, but we took it with a, a grain of salt with the knowledge that we had to have engineering done and other things and final designs created anyway. So, next slide. So in October of two thousand and twenty, Rangeley became a, a Main Street community, which qualified us for additional grants and additional sums of money from different sources. And it also brings with it some prestige and knowledge within the government of Colorado that, hey, this is a community, a Main Street community, they're looking to do economic development and, and make some changes within their community. So our, we did receive a grant to do some marketing for our Main Street committee. We've taken on the name of Rangeley Tread, which is our Colorado Main Street name. So as soon as we became members of Main Street, one of the, Gail Langley, who heads up the Main Street Program for Colorado, said, was real impressed that we had had the UTA done. And she said, well, what's one of the big projects that you would like to complete? So as a committee, we met and the decision was made, we would really like to complete the east entrance, to make it more desirable, but also a safer place. Just to kind of give you a little bit of knowledge, the police department wrote about a hundred tickets in the east entrance area because people are failing to slow down as they come into town. There's a, a school crosswalk not far from the east entrance. So there's, there's areas of concern that we are, we're concerned about. So Main Street provided consulting fees to us, which is basically a grant, in the sum of forty-eight thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. And this money was used to hire a, a firm that would design, engineer, and take drawings all the way to the point of providing costing so that we could be ready to take the next level with the, with the east entrance. So they hired Meaden Hunt out of Denver. And they actually came here and met, they met with several of us, Lisa, Joslyn, me, Janet, and some other, other Main Street committee members. And we again walked the east entrance. We talked about the things we liked. They were provided a copy of the UTA, our likes and dislikes about that. So they have started developing what, they started to develop what they could see Rangeley having at the east entrance. And I just wanna say that we don't want to be bolder. We're not that kind of town. We're a western town. And we want that frontierish type of look, but we do like the stone on the town hall and the, the car museum, those types of looks. So we were gonna stay with that strategy. So Meaden Hunt got started with this. It's a project that began last year, the beginning of last year. It went through all of last year and we're still continuing with those drawings. And they were to the point that we could actually file for grants to complete this. So, next slide. So what they did, and again, this is a mock-up. This is not the final drawings or anything like that, but this is looking westbound at the north wall. So you'll see at the end of the wall, these are stones that are gonna be similar to what we already have. There will be no trees on the OHV trail. Those will not be there. They're gonna completely redo the OHV trail to provide for drainage so that it's easier access as well as a safer place. Because if you drive by there now, the, the timbers are starting to bulge and I don't know how long they're gonna remain intact. But, so, and then it's a stone wall and it's tiered, as you can see there. The sign at the end is one of the signs that we're gonna remove from the west end of town. No, the east end of town, sorry. And we're gonna bring up here because we wanna stay, we really like our, our signage. So we're gonna keep that. We'll have a light on it. And the plants that you see in front of that are just images. Janet Miller, who's our horticulturist, is going to have plants in there that will be native to this area that require a little water. So she's gonna design the, the landscaping. She is a landscape architect. So just wanted to point that out. The landscaping will have some solar lights in it, but those will be purchased by the town and not provided. So they're not gonna be major things, but there will be some lighting. We are cautious of lighting. They originally recommended that we put lighting on the wall, but we are looking to seek a dark skies designation hopefully in the future. So we're cautious of the amount of lighting that we're providing. So, next slide. So this is looking eastbound at the north wall. And you can see where the car is. You can see the back of the sign. So that's kind of looking in a, in the eastbound direction. So the south wall is gonna be a little different. You can see the image that they drew up, but it's gonna be a tiered wall. So it'll have, I think, three layers to it. Maybe, yeah, I think it's three. And it will be of the same stones that we use on the other side. So it will also have some plants in there, again, only native plants. We're looking at some cactus that bloom and some different things. Janet has a whole list of native plants for this area. So it will only be native type plants. So. These are some examples of the stones that we're looking at, very similar to what's at the car museum, blend in well with the town, with the town hall. So we wanna keep that theme going on any beautification projects that we have. So I'm really excited about this project. Economic development, when someone comes to a community, if they're doing business, one of the first things they look at will be these types of projects. If you are a resident coming in, you also look at that, but your interests may lie more in the cost of living or the school systems that you have. But I can tell you that businesses and economic development rely heavy on this type of infrastructure project. So I'm really excited. It's been years in the works. I got in after the UTA, so I, I didn't have any input on that part of it, but I'm real excited to be working on behalf of Main Street to see if this comes to pass. And if you have questions about pricing or anything, I'm gonna defer that to my boss.
Um, do you want to also update the council on just everything else that you're being?
Yeah. So we are, Mackenzie and I at the chamber, we got a grant to work on an OHV trail guide. So we are completing that with all the OHV trails that are around Rangeley. Mekers had one for a while. We'll be partnering with Mekers, so all of ours will be included in that. There'll be descriptions and maps. So we're, we're pretty excited about that. That's a grant that we, we're excited to receive. I am also working on a tourism website. It's gonna be called Discover Rangeley CO. And I met with the website designers this week. We're hoping in the next couple of months that it'll launch. There's a lot of script. Everything exciting about Rangeley will be on there. I don't know if you saw social media last night, but part of the two videos we did last year, I received about twenty reels from those. So I started to use those last night. I put the first one up. I guess, could we pull it up? Could kind of show it. Since Roar is around the corner, we started, of course, with OHV.
Was it on YouTube?
It is on YouTube, yes.
While they're pulling that up, I got a couple of questions if it's okay. First one is, you, you sounded like you're disappointed that you weren't involved in the UTA. Is there anything that you're disappointed about that it's not included in this?
No, no. I'm very happy with the project. I'm disappointed that I couldn't be there from the beginning.
Okay, that's.
I wasn't here when it started, so.
Jeannie's been included in all the architecture, so.
I, I was just making sure.
On a scale of one to ten, I'm probably a twenty on happiness with this project.
And the other question, Lisa might answer this also, is what you keep saying, east entrance, and I love those renderings and everything that's being presented there. Is anything gonna be done with the Escalante site itself, any additional signage? What, what are we doing with that?
To be honest, Tim, we would have to probably talk to CDOT about that.
That's not it.
But we can do that. We could have us focused on that because that wasn't part of the east entrance, but we could definitely talk more.
All right.
There will be some sign, signage put up, flashing lights and stuff because we are having that problem where people aren't slowing down coming into town. So we did put on the grant, if you go back and read it, that there will be some flashing lights and cautious signs in about three different areas. It's the very first one, Mary.
The only reason I reference to it is I just had in the back of my mind that something else was gonna happen at that east entrance site when we put the new structure in.
So you wanna, yeah, go ahead. This is about a minute reel that we put up last night on all of our social media.
We're very fortunate to have the only rock crawling park in Colorado. It's a couple miles west of town. Some really difficult terrain to go through, really challenging stuff that we get to have competitions annually on and really let people test the abilities of their vehicles and see how good they are. A lot of the guys that ride it say it's, it's more difficult than Moab, so that's a pretty sweet park right around the corner for us. My favorite event of the year is Roar, our, our OHV event. It, we bring in a couple hundred people and we cruise the BLM trails and some of the other stuff around here because we just have so many to go tour and, and do. It's just a fun event to bring people together and meet new people and, and kind of let them see what Rangeley's all about and share it with them. And to me, that, that's my favorite thing to do.
So I have about twenty of these one-minute reels for everything, from boating to fishing. I have a little bit of everything. So we'll be running those starting now. Every couple of weeks, I'll probably put up a new one. Right now, we're gonna focus on OHVs because of Roar. So we're pretty excited about those. Feel like that's gonna bring more people to our community. I boost those posts out all over.
Rangeley's a great.
The one that I just showed you's been up for twenty-four hours approximately. It had twelve hundred views when I checked it before I came. And people watch them. I share them into all kinds of different pages. Rangeley has gotten a lot of, like Cody Ray, new business owners who are excited about what Rangeley has to offer. Silver Sage, the owner of that, he's just, he calls me three or four times a week and he's got, created all these websites. He's sharing posts, he's boosting posts, and he's really drawing in people. And we have a tremendous amount of interest. This past week, we, Mackenzie and I talked to a lady over the phone. She put a bid on budget hosts, so we'll see how that goes. But she's from Colorado Springs and she is a, a smart lady. And she's been researching a lot of different communities. And she said, out of all the communities in Rangeley, prob, or in Colorado, Rangeley is probably the one, I would say, within three to five years, that's gonna be the one that's just gonna be huge with growth. I don't know how much huge she means, but I kind of believe that trend that we are gonna grow. And I'm starting to see it with the people that are coming in to Rangeley. And the good news is we are attracting people that are looking for what they aren't finding in larger communities, the more conservative types that, you know, like this type of lifestyle. So, pretty excited about that. So those are some of the things I'm working on. Will be involved with Mackenzie on a few other projects throughout the year, which I'll update once we get further into that. I just think Rangeley's a great place and excited to work with everybody.
Thanks for bringing us up to date on the east entrance. It's, it's been a long time and, of course, little lapse of memory.
Well, and I had to sit down because I wasn't part of the original UTA, so I had to sit back and, and reread all of that. I was part of the presentation when they presented, but I was not part of the input. So that kind of, you know, you miss out on what the community's thinking, but I think the way it's come together is, is amazing. I think it's gonna, according to what they're telling us, it'll have a fifty to seventy-five-year life before any major work had to be done. So that is very good with that type of project. Low maintenance as far as plantings go. So I just think it's gonna add a lot to the community. It's definitely gonna change the appearance a little bit, but I think in a good way.
Well, and they also claim by doing that, a lot of people then realize they're entering town, so that even slows down.
It calms the traffic.
Right. So that's the safety feature of actually making it more attractive to them. They realize they're entering a community instead of, I don't know. We'll see.
So we're still working on the North Park project. We, I did talk with Kyle at the hospital. They have the fence up at the back of the, of it with the white slants through it. So we have a meeting coming up where we'll get on the next step. Basically, the weather's holding that up. They can't get their sprinkler systems in and things like that yet. So the weather's kind of got it on hold. But once spring hits, that project will take off and, and you'll see a lot of the sidewalks going in, the sprinkler systems going in. And you'll see that completed this year. Main Street open for business. We had two, two approvals on that. I meet with them about every two weeks. I actually talked to professional touches contractor today to make sure. And basically, for them to get started, they've got to pour some concrete, so it's gonna be a couple of weeks. They have to get heat blankets and stuff to put over it. So they're waiting, it'll be a couple of weeks before that happens. The other one was Silver Sage and it, he is ready to go as soon as the weather, he's got everything he needs. The good news is that ninety percent of what is happening with that, the purchases are happening for local businesses. So that is a double hit for both of it, for us. So we're just gonna keep looking for grants and things that we need to do. And we'll just keep working as a Main Street committee to, to make sure that we're on top of all the projects that, that the community would like. You know, we hope to add an event or two and so we'll see what happens. So, any questions?
Thanks, Jeannie.
I could keep talking, but I'm sure nobody wants to hear me.
Yes, we do. Those are good things.
I'm excited for the new Discover Rangeley website. That's something that will bring in a lot of people. And it's, the group that we hired to do it are, they're phenomenal. So they have professional script writers and so we're, we're lucky.
Well, if you haven't got to read the Rangeley review, we kind of recapped a lot and a lot of the things that have happened this last year are doing a large part to Jeannie and her efforts. So I really wanna commend her for everything she's been doing for the community.
We just need to keep going. We just.
She wears me out.
Jeannie, I have a real quick question. When you post those, are you able to see where the viewers are coming from?
I can. We have people that have subscribed to that from Montana, from Wyoming, from the Front Range. So we, we have, yes. And then I send it out. Well, for instance, the owner of White River Market, Darren, he signed up to get it. And, you know, he is very complimentary of it. And I think we're gonna see some things changed there, so we'll see. So, you know, it's just a little bit at a time. You just keep working. If you haven't read it, though, it's all Rangeley. So be sure to read it.
Well, you've got a little excerpt in the back of your packet if you have about to look at it of a previous resident, which I thought was great because for anybody that's as old as I am, that's all we had was three television stations when we were growing up. And you had to use your antenna to line up with Melon Hill to get the station. So somebody would be outside lining up the antenna and somebody'd be inside hollering out, but yeah, you got it, you know, so.
Well, that, that was fun. Well, that that was fun.
That came from just our report on the police department getting a microwave up on Melon Hill at the east cartoonist, so it was really cute.
Well, and then we had a gentleman uh who's the executive director of a foundation in Montana out of college submit an article on Jeff Anderson and about the accomplishments he had in basketball um at Rangely High School. So, you know, you're starting to get things like that where people are seeing it, so of course, he's subscribed to it. And they were like, oh, I'm gonna, you know, I want this, I want people to read about this. So it's kind of fun. It's fun that we put all Rangely in there. Uh it's just every couple of months, but it's it's quite a bit of work, so Mackenzie and I put a lot of effort into it, but it's it's a good project. And it, just to kind of reiterate, that was when Better Cities came to town and they did a marketing plan for Rangely. That was part of that marketing plan and they, no one ever implemented it. So we're glad that we did because I do see good things coming from.
Anybody else? Thank you, Genie.
Alright, any, no more questions?
Well, there will be, stay. We probably need you again. You know, you don't have to stay.
Alright, have a good night.
Thank you. Item thirteen, report for town from town manager.
So Mayor Bell and I finally got started on Lexington, so we'll probably uh as we go through this, we haven't really determined for sure how this process will work, but we will probably initially work on the transition of the policies one by one. And then I'd like to get the HR committee involved in that. So it might not be that we have to meet, I think we can do it via getting that group a log in, so you can just compare the old and the new policy and give us your comments. Um so as we work through that, I'll keep you up to date on that. Um uh we also are working on the engineering for opinion circle. Uh it's about, I wanna say, she said it was almost forty percent complete now and we have to submit that grant by the uh first of March, but by that time, we will have it almost eighty-five to ninety percent complete, depending on uh supplies and uh contractors. If we can't get it going earlier than we did La Mesa last year, we're gonna try and push it into the next year. We don't wanna be in that same position, so um hopefully we can. And if we get everybody moving along, then we'll get it done this year if we get the grant, obviously. Um Dana Haplock and um uh Chantel Unchucki is the Division of Local Government Director and obviously Dana is our representative for DOLA in this area. They um went to Dynastor today to talk to them about a couple of projects that they're working on, but they stopped back in and we ate lunch with them. And then they went to see the headworks project, which they were very impressed with. And then Joslin tried to get them to every DOLA project that we had, which we didn't have time to do, but he was very impressed with the solar lighting. That was a AGNC grant, but that comes from DOLA, the mini grants that they do. So the lighting project was from AGNC, but Dana saw that too, so he was very impressed with the lighting. He thought that looked really great. And obviously, we took him up on La Mesa and talked about both of those projects and then kind of showed him the Pinion Circle project. He did indicate to us that there is a project for infrastructure, that if we have a very good listing of all of our um Adelaide pipe that we need replaced, that we could probably get a grant to cover all of those projects. So Joslin and I are gonna go to work with Jeff and Don and get those projects all inventoried because we wanna be ready if that is to come out, because that could be huge for our uh different pipe replacements that we have coming up in the next five years. So we'll stay on top of that. But they were very impressed, like I said, with everything that's going on here. Uh also talked about us maybe cooperating with Dynastor again and help them with their gas project. So Kelly and I'll start start working on that. And um he thought maybe after the elections, because Dynastor has, I think, five people ready for a four-person, he thought that would be a good time for both uh councils to meet and kind of make sure we're all on the same page. But we'll start working on it prior to that and just talk through a few items and visit with the council about things prior to that time as well. Um planning and zoning net on an alley vacation or at more closing. I'd like to meet with the utilities committee on that and kind of get your recommendations, but I wanna talk to our municipal attorney Heather prior to that, just 'cause we're a little unclear on which direction we wanna go. Roger uh would like to vacate the alley from uh the uh White Avenue to about halfway over just to, so he can fence that now that uh, because it kind of helps him maintain a little more security at night. But if we vacate the alley, he will just take over the whole alley. We would maintain our utility easement, but um or just close it. I I'm not sure that I wanna close it because then we still have liability on the driveway. So we'll probably get more uh legal advice from Heather and then maybe we'll sit down and talk about that in the utility um committee and make sure we go in the right direction that the council would like to see. The planning and zoning said they didn't see any problem vacating it, but like I said, we're we're still a little unsure about which direction we wanna head there. So we'll get a little more advice from both SERSA and um Heather and then we'll call a meeting on that.
So even where that drive-through goes by the old Magaleno's, would you be shutting that portion of it off?
No, it it would just go to probably the edge of where his lumberyard is because there's uh it's not a s- an alley that's been recognized, but there's an alley behind all the homes that goes north and south that we wouldn't wanna shut off. So it would just be probably to the edge of the lumberyard and then come to his store. And during the day, he would have it open, and just at night, he would block the gates. And like I said, we still maintain access and our utility easement, but again, we're kind of trying to figure out which way we wanna go as to the closing or to just actually vacate it. So we'll get with the utility c- committee once we get a little more information and talk about that, because you all will have to approve that.
I was thinking over here.
I was wondering.
There's no restaurant over there.
But I'll have some drawings for you when we get to that point. Um, that's true, sorry, got sidetracked here. Other than that, we're just, like I said, working on grants. Um we're gonna start working on uh outdoor rec, um bike trails, uh river put-ins. Um Janet is working on her flower order. Um like I said, just starting to work on the things that once winter's done, we can start moving along with. Jeff has quite a few projects this summer. He's uh gotta do all the service installations off of the old cement line on Highway sixty-four. He needs to continue to try and get the raw water line to the east entrance park. Um he's going to move the water line in the sewer plant to get it out of the plant, so he's gonna be a very busy guy without even getting involved in some of them if we get the um replacement project up on Pinion Circle, because he'll probably be part of that as well. So he's gonna keep busy just finishing off things that we've started and just haven't got done. Do you guys have any questions or anything that you'd like to know more about that I may not have mentioned?
The pipe replacement, was that grant through DOLA?
The, you mean at the sewer plant?
No, the pipe replacement that you were talking about that you're gonna get with Jeff and Don about replacing lead pipe and all that.
Oh, no, we're t- I'm, that is grant, a grant that's specifically for that. He said there's gonna be grant tons for that. He said if we have an inventory of all the ones we have left, we could apply for that grant.
And that's through DOLA?
But we have to have an inventory of it and we pretty much do, it's just not written down. So we're, I'm gonna go back and just make sure we have an inventory and how many feet and everything, because if that's one that we could do them all in, that would be huge.
Yeah, that's why I was asking, did through DOLA and did they say when that's gonna
I think it's probably something to do with the infrastructure money coming out.
come available? Did they say when that was gonna be available?
He just said it's gonna be coming out, he just didn't give us a timeframe. But he said to have an inventory ready, so we'll go to work on that. Any other questions?
Thanks, Lisa. Is that it, Mr. Boydston? I was getting ready to give him their flaming glory. Get him back in here. She about got out of here. So you guys are here for your government class, I take it, right?
Our leadership class, yes.
Okay.
This is five of our six student council leaders, executive council.
Okay. Do you guys have any questions for us? You just don't wanna ask or you don't have any question? Okay.
So what do you think?
Um Arthur Goddard, he really is theestraight.
So I can remember being your guys' age and and going through, I think it was FAA or FFA and having to do these um kind of meetings and lead them and stuff like that. And so up until about seven years ago, it really didn't mean anything to me because we just, I mean, you, we did it thirty years ago, so it wasn't any big deal, but so the stuff that you guys are learning now will definitely carry into your future of what you guys decide to be as leaders, whether it be a town councilman or serve on a, you know, a special district board or something like that. So keep keep focused and learn as much as you can right now, because it will, it will carry on in life, because you guys are leaders for a reason right now, right? And you will carry on being leaders the rest of your life. So keep focused, you guys can do it.
Thank you.
If you guys needed to leave, you could.
I told him, I told him six fifteen in email, I mixed up the school board.
Oh.
Which we're going to next week.
Oh.
So I told him, I'll shed some time.
I thought that was to make sure they got their own time.
Yes, they all got here.
They were here.
Thank you, guys.
Kyle, thanks for bringing them in.
Appreciate it.
Would you want to move our discussion about um the book list project up since I have Sam on the phone?
Yeah, let's move to item fifteen G. Discussion and action to approve the ti- oh, wait a minute.
It's actually H.
Fifteen.
Are you still there, Sam?
Hi, I'm here.
Okay.
Fifteen H. Discussion and action to approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero two, a resolution to join the Book Cliffs Highway Coalition opposing the construction of the Utah Book Cliffs Highway Project. This consortium involves municipalities, elected leaders, nonprofit organizations, and other stakeholders who are working to prevent the Book Cliffs Highway from being built.
Would you just like to talk really quickly, Sam, on that?
Yeah, certainly. Hi, folks, sorry, I cannot be with you physically tonight, but thank you for uh putting me on the agenda and hearing me out. I know that Commissioner Hadeen from Grand County, Utah, came and visited you sometime last fall, I believe. Um and I can just give a brief update on what's changed with this issue since then. The Seven County Infrastructure Coalition is going through with their proposal to fund this, the construction of this highway. Uh they have recently, in the last two weeks, submitted their um submitted their proposal to the Moab BLM Field Office. It is now up to that field office to determine whether they've um met all the requirements for such an application. And they are, uh the Seven County Infrastructure Coalition is always worked, is also working legislatively to make sure there's funding for this highway. Um they are estimating it to cost around a hundred and forty million dollars of Utah taxpayer money, though in twenty fourteen, the assessment said four hundred and fifty million. So as we all know, things have not gotten, in fact, less expensive recently. So we're expecting it to be a much more costly proposal than they are advertising right now. Um thus far, a commissioner in Uinta County is uh, he's still voting yes for the proposal, but he, like you folks, are concerned, he's concerned about uh the the way that it might diminish some tourism revenue uh in creating a new alternate route through um through the middle of nowhere, Utah, instead of going through your town. So uh I very much appreciate a your vote to uh to join us as a town council. Um there's no fiscal responsibility to you joining. I would extend an invitation to any of you who are interested to join our bi-weekly coalition calls in which we update each other and strategize. Um it's been a really interesting coalition of everyone from rock art experts to the ranchers who live there, to local elected officials. Um so I'd appreciate having your voice on it and I am ready to answer any questions.
On this project, 'cause I drove down that, the park is even paved and it's not in very good shape anyway, even though it hadn't been built that long ago. Are they planning on redoing all the bad spots in it, or is this just the cost to extend the new part of the road?
Yeah, so uh you're talking about the Seapridge Road, is that right?
Yeah, I've been down Seapridge and it's not in a good shape at all.
Right, no, it's 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 in pretty poor shape and they marked that as completed in twenty fourteen, I believe. It might have been twenty twelve, uh despite the fact that they didn't install the wildlife fences that they were going to and they didn't install all the drainage. So, yeah, I've been up there, I haven't been up there yet this winter when that freeze thaw is probably cracking it open further, but it's not in great shape. And no, they don't have any any allocated money. That is, that is just, uh the hundred and fifty million that they're quoting is just to extend from the end of Seapridge down to I seventy-three Grand County.
Yeah, down e- is, they're they're going down East Canyon?
That's right, yeah. And uh they're going down East Canyon. They've discussed a few other alignments which are even less practical than East Canyon is. As you may know, there's a uh the fifteen hundred foot drop from the from the end of Seapridge Road down to the bottom of East Canyon, and it would be an engineering marvel to get a road in there.
All the, all them roads coming off the the backside of Seapridge down to seventy are pretty rough.
Okay, so is Grand County wanting to, are they the ones that, 'cause 'cause Uinta County built the Seapridge Road, right? That's a, that's a county road still, right? And then Grand County just didn't finish the road because of the funding?
Uh Grand, Grand County has declined from improving that road for a variety of reasons, mainly because we have other infrastructure projects we'd rather fund and also because uh it's been mostly pushed by the Seven County Infrastructure Coalition, of which we're not members.
Would the maintenance then fall to Grand County for what's in your county?
That's the, that's unclear thus far. Certainly, uh some of the B and C roads would be classified to A and B roads and we would be responsible for that. We're also concerned about uh Grand County being responsible for search and rescue um and fire response out there, which which is already something we're we're trying to balance in in uh Thompson Springs. Um and uh they have said that UDOT will maintain this road, though UDOT has no, no, no uh interest in seeing it built nor necessarily be saddled with uh with the cost of it.
Well, I'm completely against it because I think it'll take any traffic that's coming from the gorge, um Vernal or or possibly Roosevelt that's traveling to uh to Grand Junction or even getting to the the southern Colorado area. I think it's, it will take that traffic away from Rangely. What little bit of tourism or or um people. What little bit of tourism or or um people commuting through the community, it it's, it's not gonna help Ransley out at all, so I'm all for signing the the uh resolution.
You want a motion?
Does anybody else have any questions or concerns about it? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion's been made by Tim, second by Cody. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for joining our call and and um if there's anything we can do to to help out, please let us know.
Would you email me to that um the meeting information? And I can always forward it out to the town council, but I'll try and attend that as regularly as I can.
Certainly. Thank you, Lisa, and thanks to all of you counselors. Uh we're glad to have you on board.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Okay, let's jump up to fourteen. We didn't have any old business. Okay, let's go to item fifteen A. Discussion in action to approve the January check register.
I'll make a motion to approve the January twenty-two check register.
I'll second.
Motion's been made by Trey, second by Alyssa. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item fifteen B. Discussion in action to approve the appointment of Lee Stanley to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
They kinda sprung me, sprung that on me, so they approved him prior to the town council, but I didn't feel like you guys would have opposition to that cuz that will fill that board for the time being, so.
Make a motion to approve the appointment of Lee Stanley to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
I'll second.
Motion's made by Tim, second by Alyssa. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item fifteen C. Discussion in action to approve the liquor license renewer, renewal for Willis Ransley Enterprise LLC DBA Ransley Liquor Store.
Hi.
Hi.
How are you?
Wonderful. How are you?
Oh, you know, Trey, living dream.
I make a motion to approve uh the liquor license renewal for Willis Ransley Enterprise LLC DBA Ransley Liquor Store.
I'll second.
Motion is made by Tim, second by Alyssa. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you for what you do for our community. It's a vital business to our community, it really is, and so we appreciate it.
Pack it up and go get a real job.
You got a real job. Stay there. Don't leave. You got at least one more year.
At least one more year?
Yeah, we just approved it for another year.
I know, I just kinda drove around with John last night and like, maybe they just wanna prove it and he's like, shut up. I'm like, they don't have a reason not to, but maybe they will and it works us into making a difference.
Thank you.
Sorry, Erin.
Um, item fifteen D. Discussion in action to approve the application to CDOT revitalization Main Street in the amount of one million, six hundred and thirty-four thousand, five hundred dollars for the improvement to the east entrance.
So after talking to Jocelyn too, I wanted to kinda give you a little bit of background on some of the cost of this. I think this grant is gonna be more under the purview of what normal CDOT requirements are, so there'll probably be a lot of paperwork. I think Main Street will try to minimize that. But she did say she added almost uh three hundred and fifty thousand to the cost of just processing all of their paperwork to get to the point of doing the project. I'm hoping Main Street will maybe push a little back and we won't have to as much, but that is part of that. So it's unfortunate because I think it's unnecessary to some degree, but I just wanted to kinda give you a heads up on that. But it's gonna work perfect if we get the grant.
I'll make a motion to approve the application to CDOT revitalization, revitalizing Main Street in the amount of one million, six hundred and thirty-four thousand, five hundred dollars. I'll second.
A motion's been made by Alyssa, second by Cody. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item fifteen E. Discussion in action to approve, uh wait a minute.
F.
F.
Excuse me.
Discussion in action to approve the application to the Northwest Colorado Development Council for a grant to further review by Just Transit, Just Transition to fund a training certificate program to CNCC in the amount of four hundred thousand.
So we're still working on how we will um put that four hundred thousand to each of these line items in your um summary of that. But um the pot of money that we got was about two six, point six million and Peyton and Craig already applied for a million, four fifty. So the other communities left, it probably leaves about three hundred and twenty thousand per community in other counties. Um I, my intent is to, and this is basically for the cogency um piece of getting a training certificate program going, but it wouldn't just be about cogency. I think there's some other applications after we talked to Keith Peterson at CNCC. So it would be that piece of uh our cogency plan. So that basically is what it's about and the college is on board with that. It it would cover these items that we talked about. Um it would cover a uh teacher for the program, certification and vetting resources and associated costs with CNCC's participation, curriculum development, and then also equipment that we'd have to purchase in order to teach the class and a facility's cost and some marketing dollars. So um we're gonna go ahead and present that to the Northwest um Colorado Development Council and then they vet it and then they send it on to Just Transition. Just Transition doesn't have to approve any of the things that the council recommends if it doesn't fit in the criteria that they've set forth. But I think ours probably of most of the projects that I've seen fits very well into that, so.
I make a motion to uh approve the application for the Northwest Colorado Development Council uh for a grant uh through Just Transition to fund a training certificate program at CNCC in the amount of four hundred thousand.
Second. Motion's made by Tim, second by Trey. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item fifteen G. Discussion in action to approve resolution twenty-two dash zero-one. A resolution canceling the April fifth, twenty-two election and declaring the mayoral, mayoral candidate elected.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made by Tim, second by Alyssa. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We did fifteen H already. Informational items.
There's some additional stuff in there. The BLM had, you know, another review period for the Gateway South Transmission Line. All the information's on that if you wanna do any kind of comment. And Tim has asked me multiple times about Club Twenty and I finally got this pulled up. So anybody that is on this list, even though I'm the primary contact, anybody on this list can go to a Club Twenty meeting and represent Ransley. So, or you can call in. She, she said anybody on this list can show up and be a representative of Ransley. So if you wanna attend either remotely or go to a meeting, as long as you're on this list, you can represent our community.
And that's this last sheet? Okay, yes, okay. Thank you, Lisa.
I'm sorry it took me so long, Tim.
No, we're busy. Thank you, though, for doing that.
I don't know whose phone number's on there, but it's not mine.
I know. What's that?
Somebody's phone number's on there and it's not mine, but that's okay.
Is it the town's number? Oh, that's interesting.
Mine is, huh?
No, his is the only different one. Everyone else is.
Well, we'll have to correct that. She got it done pretty quickly, so I will.
Oh, they're all the same except yours.
I have no clue where that came from. I wonder if it's like a past um mayor's phone number or something.
Maybe just call it.
Maybe it's Frank.
I'll try it in a second, see the answers.
Thank you for pointing that out.
The.
Our COVID numbers went up a little bit. I have a table if anybody hasn't already got tickets to the Chamber Old West Dinner. Are there any council members that are interested in going? That haven't already, you and a significant other or guest? No?
We bought a table.
Is everybody covered? Cody?
I'm not sure if Travis wants to attend with me and he's my significant other.
Well, let me know if you can.
Are you gonna make me go by myself?
If we, I'll, I'll keep one aside and um you can let me know. If not, I'll probably just do a drawing for the employees.
Yeah, and I'll let you know. I'll talk to him about it if he wants, cuz he said yes and then he's like, oh no, it's, it's one of those people doesn't, he avoids crowds. So.
Well, we can put him in a corner.
Yeah.
I, I have a significant other that's like this.
Down to one board vacancy. Hopefully Dawn's gonna pull through with this one.
Yeah, um I was gonna pick on him a little bit tonight about that. Ty and I did go to their um meeting about forming uh, I'm not even gonna know how to say it. A group that would take over if government failed. Maybe we talk about that sometime.
Okay. Are they getting a mail, Tim?
Pardon?
Did they get a mail for the, did they get any?
Whoever has the most guns.
Scheduled announcements are in front of us. Anything else to be brought in front of the council? Okay, adjourned at eight oh two.